I didn't say.
Public.
I wanted to say. I wasn't here, I was actually on the phone. I changed offices a couple of weeks ago. I was at a conference. I just want to thank my fellow board members for their confidence in me taking on this role. And I just want to make sure everybody understands what's your expectation. What's your expectation about being in the board? I want to thank everybody for coming to the conference. And I look forward for it.
Good work and relationship going forward. And welcome, I didn't get a chance, welcome to the two new board members. Sounds like we have two great additions. So that's it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, so first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes?
I have none, I'll move to approve.
Second.
I'm on to second. Yes. Sorry.
Whoa, order, order please.
Yes. Yes.
Wow.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next item. Item on the agenda is reception of visitors. I didn't look at the log, has anybody signed in? So we have no, nobody signed in. Anybody that didn't sign in is certainly welcome to step up to the microphone and speak for three minutes if you'd like, address the board. Okay? And we'll move on to the president's report. So we've got a couple of items under the president's report here. I'll just read through these. Board member orientation, June 20th, is that an organized session offsite somewhere? Gene?
That is onsite, so and it's for any board members that would like to attend. In particular, we designed it for when there's new board members that are joining our team, but obviously all board members are welcome. We'll talk through operations of the district, different offices here, and just kind of remind board members to the interface with the district, if you will.
And it's open to anybody that wants to come, like for a refresher?
Sure, absolutely. It's good, that's good for our administrative team too, because we'll be prepared to provide information that may be new as well for even veteran board members, some things may have changed in terms of. Four. And it's on four. That's what we were thinking.
Yeah. We used to do that, when I first came on the board, they did that all the time when they had a new one. All the administrators got together and just basically, first off, identified themselves, which was handy, so you knew who they were, and then just talked a little bit about how everything goes together and what everybody's doing, and it just really helped you kind of wrap your head around what's what and who's who, a little bit anyway.
Definitely worth it, I did mine all online self-paced, so it was kind of a all-by-myself sort of training. Next item, 2017 Strategic Planning Committee meeting, August 29th, 2017.
If you remember, at our last meeting, we were trying to just zero in on some dates for a couple of important planning meetings. So tentatively, and these would be meeting times that we're thinking for the Strategic Planning Committee meeting, we were thinking we would start about 6:30 in the, on August 29th, that's the fourth Tuesday of that month, so that would be an additional meeting on the August date, and we probably would invite the community in at about 6:30, like we did last time, six or 6:30, I think we landed on 6:30. And then the other two dates following that were similarly, we were just trying to make sure that board members could get those on their calendars as early as possible in terms of the finance workshop as well.
Assuming it'll be an update on first year and then an extension year, this becomes a bowling five-year plan.
Yeah, so we thought that what we did last time in terms of the strategic plan was good, we'll look at our greatness indicators and kind of view how we did last year, and then look at any revisions we might have to our plan going forward, and try to crystallize some of our action plans for our teams for the 17, 18 school year. So we actually liked what we fell in last year and thought it was a good process.
The event to invite these. Sit up.
Well, some of it, and we probably need some new faces, because I know some of our people that we had at our workshops, I think they're children, not that they're not welcome back, but I think some of them had children who may be gone now, so we'll probably invite the same group and some will be able to make it and some not, so we're always looking for new engaged parents and community members that want to participate in that.
Next item, the finance workshops will be holding September 12th and 19th later this year.
The 12th is, if you remember, that's a normal board meeting date, so we're going to take one normal board meeting date, and we might have to do a little bit of business right before that, so we were thinking we'd start that meeting at about 6:00, and then start the fi, the first part of the finance workshop down in the cafeteria at about 6:30, and then the following Tuesday would have been a third Tuesday, so that would be an additional meeting for that month, and we would, that workshop, if you will, and that would start at 6:30 in the cafeteria as well. So if board members can just start to put those in your calendars now, I know it seems a long way off, but those dates, if we can kind of get them fairly concrete, it would be good moving forward, I think.
And that's for financial planning for the 18, 19 year.
We'll be looking at the set, we'll be in the midst of having just developed or the budget for 17, 18, and what we want to do is kind of take that 17, 18 budget and really dissect that a lot, meaning we're, look deeply at where our revenue and expenditures are in all those areas, knowing that we're already into that school year, but it'll also help in terms of planning, right, because we do work early, and obviously if there's any critical decisions that would need to be made, you know, the sooner, by the end of that calendar year is really ideal for us in terms of any long-term planning and major changes. That's why we think the timing of it, you know, the earlier the better in terms of the 18, 19 budget process.
Last item is the annual conference, this is usually the 17th, 18th, and 19th of November, that's that Thursday, actually, is it Thursday, Friday, Saturday, right before Thanksgiving? So, and that's held downtown.
Gene's also looking for, sooner we, if we.
Because they want to book hotel rooms as soon as they can, because they get, that weekend really books up fast anyway.
On to committee report.
Jumping into committee report, just before that, I just wanted to thank the administration for graduation. Marvelous job, new venue this year, things were fantastic. That's a daunting task, I know you guys were down there at the crack of dawn, getting kids all set up, I think things went off without a hitch. Kids coming in and reporting directions. I was impressed with the rolling screen, I know we're going to work next year on some sound quality on the stage, and maybe give the big screen to do live streaming, let the kids get their confidence. But I was impressed, nothing but positive feedback. Thank you very much. Especially the kids running around the back, asking me questions.
Absolutely, that was great.
Go that way.
Where's section C, I'm like.
A, B, C, it's down that way. But thank you guys.
And I think it's worth, we were talking about this on the way back, it's, Northwestern's a nice venue, really hard to get to for a lot of people in and out of there. This was really easy to get to, I know it was a more expensive venue, but the whole idea of no limit with tickets and easy access might be something to think about if they, if it was possible, maybe we stay.
Old parents, grandparents, instead of the bleacher seats.
Yeah, we were, so we, we were talking about when to do that, we were thinking that, we, one of our thoughts originally was specifically for Paul and Janita, that after, we were wondering whether or not we shouldn't have our orientation kind of in terms of our overall process, and then, so we were wondering whether or not the last meeting in June or the meeting in July may be a better group, but, and you're talking about assignments, right, Mr. Munda? Right, we do, so the bad thing about that is we obviously will have some work to do before then, so I don't know if that's necessary or not. It's really a board's choice on when, when you want to have that discussion about committee assignments.
Probably just get.
of generally what they do for everyone.
There's not a committee for you guys, it's not a committee that you lead, you're just there as a board, so board representative to just listen and understand, and safety, curriculum.
Don't forget curriculum.
Curriculum.
Oh, yeah, curriculum.
We're here for them.
Student handbook, seat all.
Well, I'll get that out, so at least get people's thinking a little bit. I wanted to just echo Mr. Munda's comments, the graduation, we think from our end was, went pretty well, so we were happy about that. Second thing is, we're doing a little review, we'll be doing a review in the next probably couple of weeks with our teachers here regarding any changes we need to make, if any, to the senior exam exemption policy and how that worked in terms of the qualifications, the board supported that, is obviously part of our strategic plan to try to make sure that our seniors, you know, hold themselves accountable for a good rigorous end of their senior year. And so we think there were some really good things that happened, and yet, you know, anytime you do anything, we probably hope to learn some things. So that's something that obviously currently, Mr. Keely and transferring that over to Mr. Parrott, that information about how that works, obviously we'll be reviewing that. And the last thing was, I just wanted to remind the board also in our strategic plan was the website, we are changing websites, and we probably would be ready to go June 1st, we're actually, our date is actually, we're going to push it on, on Monday, June the 5th. So we're, right now, Rob and his team that have been working on that project are doing a great job getting it ready in the background, we're adding content to that. Our goal is still, June 5th, to unroll the new website to the community, which is a good time for us to do it, obviously, because we're out of school, right, and yeah, we still have some time before registration gets on us if there are any things that we need to work out. So just wanted to update the board on that. Thank you.
Before I start, I just want to point out, there is a typographical error in paragraph three, the second to last sentence, it should be a negative eight million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, so you can take that seven out of there.
About eighty-seven million?
Right. Compared to last year, April of 2016, our operating fund revenue is down 2.8 million, result of the state funding delays largely, our expenditures are up 2.8 million, those fall into some categories that I've outlined in the treasures report for you. Fund balance is down about 4.8 million dollars compared to last year, now that crosses fiscal years. Our deficit's up about 5.6 million dollars for the year. So you will have an amended budget to talk about a little later in this meeting, but it kind of prevents, it provides an overview for you. We budgeted a 2.3 million dollar deficit, and we're sitting at 5.6 right now, but April's really, you know, the, in June, we'll switch to the accrual method of accounting, and that will be really where we closely align to what the audit results will be. So that will be obviously very, oh, not so positive numbers at this point, but we'll, we'll keep going.
Are we thinking the state's going to send us any money?
Everybody that I have talked to from the state, including the top analysts down there, is, we've gotten one payment, and we, they're thinking maybe half of another in June and half of another in July, so a total of, they don't think even two complete payments, one full and one partial.
So the projected negative, our fiscal year?
It would be, it's, it's, boy, I had the number, it's about three million dollars in.
Yeah, what's a payment worth?
Our payment cycle is, usually we would have a payment in.
How much money is one payment?
One payment is 1.8 million dollars.
So if we get another half and a half, then we'd get another 1.8 million, which would eat into this, you know, obviously a bunch, and if we got the other one, we'd be not great, but certainly much better.
Actually, I take that back, I think in the amended budget, I budgeted down 1.8, so every payment's about 900,000.
I didn't hear the numbers, so even with, with the payments we think we might get.
Will be down in revenue 1.8 million.
From the state?
From the state.
Right, what will be the total deficit for the year, for our fiscal year? We started at?
4.3.
So two times what we thought.
Yep. We'll go through that one when we talk about the budget amendment, but yeah, sure.
Monthly report?
For all the board's information, hopefully you found those monthly reports from our buildings, just in terms of our suspensions and attendance and enrollment, and we will have one more.
Still, the one question I was going to ask is, did we see an uptick in senior attendance with the new policy?
The kids were concerned about it, so there's, that's for sure, right, that the kids were, like, the kids were concerned about it, so that's the first step that they were.
I know when my kids heard about it.
Just as a reminder, our graduation was our 99th event of our 100 events to celebrate our centennial, and so we actually, first, I think, official end of our annual year. I think the foundation still has a number of handfuls, there are some books for sale, and we'll try to push those out, because the video that showed before the graduation ceremony, we were thinking it might prompt some people just an interest in the history of, obviously that.
What is the final?
It was just our, we just did, we actually just did it June, we just did it the end of, from our end, we just picked a day and made that the 100. So graduation was, graduation was the fin, the big one.
On a new business, so the first item on a new business, we've got our approval of the memorandum of understanding between the board and the education of Warren Township High School District 121.
Questions?
Questions?
So I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Warren Township High School District 121, Lake County, Illinois, and the Warren Township High School Federation of Teachers regarding 2017, 18 insurance rates as presented and pending district legal review.
Second.
Second by Munda. Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
Yes. Next item, we've got the approval to renew the medical and dental vision and life insurance rates with the regional benefit co-op. Any questions, comments?
I'll move to approve medical, dental, vision, life insurance.
Second.
Pauls?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes. From C, question on possible approval of the roofing and solar energy project, so I understand we have a presentation?
I'd like to introduce Kurt Hinz from Performance Services. He has been here to present before, he's going to give you an update on their investigation of the roof, cost for the solar project, update to the solar project. Looks like our roof, which was verified by the architect, has about a one to three-year life, and would have to be, we'd have to talk about replacement of that roof at Almond and two sections at Oak Plain before solar panels would go on. So Kurt will give you a much better explanation of this than I will, and he's certainly here for, for questions.
That would be amazing, thank you so much. Thank you again for having me, Kurt Hinz from Performance Services. I was going to start with the solar and then we can get into the roofs, but if you have questions again as last time, please stop me, I know we're giving you a lot of information all at once. We've done quite a bit since the last time I was here, and know really where we're at and where we need to be, including turning in the RFP proposal, so. Quick background again, solar is obviously coming, we talked about this, it's hitting Illinois at a alarming rate, through 2016, there were 70 megawatts of solar, and they have a mandate of over 2,200. So we'd be just scratching the surface, but it is something that with costs being reduced, with SREC income coming in, and with the ability to put solar on roofs and grounds, carports, the amount of megawatts are expanding every day. The panel wattages have increased even from our last conversation, to panels or wattages are over 360 watts, so that continues to change on a daily basis. The impact is obviously net zero, positive in year one cash flow, and that's obviously important for a school district, especially making money. The panels are going to last you 30, 40, 50, 60 years, obviously by then you probably will want to change them out and put new panels in, because there's opportunity to keep increasing your wattages. But the typical payback is going to be around that 10, 10, 12-year range, which is really what we look for in any guaranteed energy savings project. Costs, please, no, please do, no, no.
It's a 10 to 15-year range, you dial that in, I mean, 10, 15 years is a range, and then what's the annual cash intake once you pay off?
So you're actually making money starting year one.
Right, but you're also paying off debt.
Yeah, but that includes paying off your debt, all interest charges, all in, 100%.
So payback is assuming then you pay off all the debt.
Payback is assuming you pay off all the debt and you have no more, no more lease payment, if you want to skip to it, we can.
You don't have to skip to it.
Okay, I'll show you, I have a, I have all your numbers completely worked out based on the size of the system and where everything's at. Again, I talked about this before, but let me just touch it, it's not saying you're going to lock in your energy rate, your rate is still going to be changing, and again, you pay by far the lowest of any district around the area and most, anybody in the northern part of the state, so be proud of that, that's a great thing. You can expect though, some spikes are coming, especially with the smart grids taking effect at the end of this year. What I mean by locking your rate is, it's not going to matter if you're paying 5.4 cents now and the rate goes up to 7.5, because you're producing solar at 7.5. So the actual value of the solar and your rate isn't going to change as much. If you weren't producing solar and your rate went up to 7.5 or 8.5 or 10 cents, you would see a huge impact on your budget in terms of how much you're spending. So that's what I mean by locking in your rate. We know what it's going to do for the environment, and we know how great it is as an educational piece, especially something you could do with STEM labs, kits, and really get the students involved. The history has obviously increased dramatically in terms of reduction in price, again, mainly because China, Korea production, the level of panel wattages have increased so dramatically, and the cost to produce them have reduced. You're looking at around $3 a watt where even, you know, six, eight years ago, that was, price was double. Adding that with the SREC market is making these projects viable from year one, and actually allowing the districts to make money starting out. We talked about the process, so we've gone through and evaluated the different site options. Right now, we're currently, we're looking at a roof mount at Walman, a ground mount at Almond Campus, a roof mount at the Oak Plain Campus, and a ground mount at the Oak Plain Campus. We've done some preliminary designs with that, and we have a really good understanding of exactly what the systems can hold. Now, we haven't done the extensive structural analysis that is needed on the two roofs, but we've done some very preliminary, so we have a very good idea of what the buildings can handle. But the numbers I'm going to show you later, take that into account, and would be reduced if we couldn't put all the panels up there we see fit. That's part of the design part, system approval is kind of where we're at, we've gone through the RFP process, and we are coming to you with the, with the project, hoping that the district decides to move forward. After that would be, obviously, the installation, we would be getting final pricing on the solar piece, commissioning, interconnection with ComEd, and then forms assurances, the metering and the monitoring of your system, so there'd be an extra meter that's put in to keep track of how much you're producing on a daily basis. That would offset the costs of the SRECs, and that's how you would actually end up getting paid in the future. We talked about roof mounts, looking at structural limitations and just making sure that the buildings can handle them, roof, the age of your roof, we found that, obviously, 1996 roof at Almond Campus needs to be replaced. The ground mount, we look at the topography and the, what you're using the land for, obviously, where we're looking at putting it is in a retention and detention area, so it's not something that you're using, but it is viable, it's a needed piece of land, because that does help with your stormwater and your drainage. We have, we've hired a civil to, to help us evaluate that as well, and make sure that it's something that will still work, and we've come up with some options, how we would be able to install that in that area, so. Those are just what the ground mount would look like, that's the car, parking lot is another option as well. Typically, you don't get the same return, because you can't get the exact angle, you're going to get the best return on your investment on the ground, it is, it is inexpensive in terms of looking at a parking lot system, it's roughly the same as a roof mount, maybe a little cheaper, but you get a much better production, because we can put the angle at 20, 25%, possibly even 30%.
So a roof mount, we can do about five degrees, because of the uplift and the downforce,
the, the snow load and your peak, and they take into account every major snowstorm that could possibly hit, and just, safety is their number one thing. So we go back and forth a lot with the structural engineer, so about five degrees is pretty typical, and what we've been installing everything on the roof. The ground, we're going to get 20, 25, even 30%, once we get that exact layout and know exactly where we're putting it. We have to leave some spacing for some of the debris and, and underbrush to continue to grow, to keep with the stormwater. We also have looked at putting in parking lot type legs and stands, so that it's up high enough to cover any potential area of water overflow. So adding that in, we can space it out a little bit more, we may reduce the number of panels by a few, but we'll leave the space, and that'll keep the vegetation growing. These are discussions that we've been having pretty seriously with our civil engineer.
So with that angle change, that amount of energy that can be produced with that angle on a ground mount versus a roof mount?
Correct, much greater, so, real, real rough number, the, the roof mount at, at the Almond Campus would be able to produce. We have, we've hired a civil to help us evaluate that as well and make sure that it's something that will still work and we've come up with some options, how we would be able to install that in that area, so. Those are just what the ground mount would look like. That's the car, parking lot is another option as well. Typically you don't get the same return because you can't get the exact angle. You're going to get the best return on your investment on the ground. It is, it is inexpensive in terms of looking at a parking lot system. It's roughly the same as a roof mount, maybe a little cheaper, but you get a much better production because we can put the angle at 20, 25%, possibly even 30%. So a roof mount, we can do about five degrees because of the uplift and the downforce, the, the snow load and your peak, and they take into account every major snowstorm that could possibly hit and just, safety is their number one thing. So we go back and forth a lot with the structural engineer. So about five degrees is pretty typical and what we've been installing everything on the roof. The ground, we're going to get 20, 25, even 30%. Once we get that exact layout and know exactly where we're putting it. We have to leave some spacing for some of the debris and, and underbrush to continue to grow, to keep with the stormwater. We also have looked at putting in parking lot type legs and stands so that it's up high enough to cover any potential area of water overflow. So adding that in, we can space it out a little bit more. We may reduce the number of panels by a few, but we'll leave the space and that'll keep the vegetation growing. These are discussions that we've been having pretty seriously with our civil engineer.
So with that angle change, that amount of energy that can be produced with that angle on a ground mount versus a roof mount?
Correct. Much greater. So real, real rough number. The, the roof mount at, at the Almond Campus would be able to produce about, it's a 1.3 megawatt system on the roof and it would produce about 1.7, 1.8 gigawatts. The 1.9 megawatt ground mount, so 600 KW more produces a million more kilowatts. So it's quite a bit more, yes. Yes, quite a bit more.
So that could go to... Right, if you wanted to generate the exact same amount, you need less panels.
Less panels.
Which is less cost.
Less cost.
Or same amount of panels, more cost.
Correct. Ultimately what we were trying to do was give you the, the most amount of potential production that we could without having all the exact structural analysis done. We, we have a pretty good idea and you'll look on the design I'm going to show you. We've left some spaces still on the roof open. There's a good chance that the structural engineer will come back and say, yep, this, this can handle it and we could add more panels. Or if they limited some areas, it's another area that's open. But we were, we were somewhat conservative in that design just to make sure that we covered it. It's a lot easier on the ground where it's just an open area and we can just pack it full of as many panels as we possibly can. The other thing that we did with the ground mount is there is a, there's a two megawatt kind of max per location. So we actually had to reduce the panel wattage for the ground mount at the Almond Campus, or we could reduce the number of panels and increase the... Right now, we've, we've done it so that we've reduced the wattage to 335 watt panels versus the 355 watt panels.
Or you just put fewer on the roof and more on the ground?
The, the ground, the original design with 355 watt panels was 2.12 megawatts. So we were 120 KW over the max that's allowed in case the district decides to go after any grants or rebates in the future. So we figured we would keep it under that too in case there was opportunity for future...
The roof is considered different than the ground?
The roof is a different, it's all one district, it's all one location, but it's two separate fields. Yep. So this is potentially what we're looking at doing here at the, the Almond Campus. We're showing a 75% reduction in your energy costs district wide based on the four locations that we're putting in. This is a 1.3 megawatt system that would go on the roof and you can see again, we've left quite a few spaces open. These main spaces right here are what we have to do the most evaluation on. The big long span roof, Joyce, need to make sure that they can handle the racking or we have to find some different racking. And there are quite a bit of options out there, but we just haven't had the exact, we didn't hire the structural engineer to go that in depth until we get approval from the board to move forward. The...
No ground?
Yep, there's the ground mount?
At all?
No, this is the ground mount right here. Yep. So this is what we would be looking at, the, the ground mount. Again, this equates to a 1.98 megawatt system, basically a two megawatt system, which is extremely large and very impressive. We've evaluated the land. We know it can handle it. Again, based on some spacing or possibly looking at the legs and different things to keep the water out. We're going to be covered there, but we've included all that in our, in our numbers and our projections. At the Oak Plain Campus, this is what, again, the roof mount would look like. We've left, again, some areas open. You can see this looks potentially like roof that needs to be repaired at some point. So we don't want to put panels there until, until that would happen, but we have, we for sure would have opportunity in the future to do that. That equates to about a 700, just shy of a 740 KW system at the Oak Plain Campus. And then the, the ground mount is over the old parking lot that is not being used. Now, the funny thing that we found out is this is in a floodplain, as you know, and we have to, we have to stay under regulation of the 500 year flood. Which means for us to put the solar panels here, they have to be able to cover the 500 year flood, which your building would be underwater, but your solar panels are still going to be producing because they're waterproof and they're going to be above the floodplain. This is a much smaller area and we would cut down just some brush to be able to fit, but we're looking at it just shy of a 280 KW system. All in all, you're looking at 4.33 megawatt system for the district, which is by far the potential for the largest in the state. Right now, Lake Park is at 1.8 as I mentioned before, Valley View will be at 2.3, and the Grays Lakes project that we're doing is a 1, 2.7 megawatt. So you would be substantially larger than all those.
Many of those schools utilize the parking lot panels?
None of them have used the parking lot panels. Majority of those are done in the west and down south because you're getting 350, 340 days of sun. And so if you've ever lived in Arizona, as I have, in the summer it gets to 120 degrees. So having your car in a shade is a really nice thing, but putting solar on, you know, helps offset some of the cost. Here, because the installation is much more expensive and the angle is still only about five degrees, it's much better to do a roof or a ground mount.
Hard question to answer. So who would be the largest installation? What's the sweet spot between spending these 12 million dollars?
This is a, this is...
And the, you know, if that...
12 million is...
Kind of go up and up, right? But here, never mind.
Yep. So here, here we go. And it's a great question because I've been messing with this and I have done probably 35 different versions with different layouts and different designs and looking at if we have panels here, if we don't, if we change the wattage. What we found is that this is obviously what I believe to be your best option. You're still going to be consuming almost 7.7 million KWH and with the system we'd be able to put on, you'd be able to produce 5.7 million KWH. So that's 75% of your electric costs district wide go away. Yes, it is.
He staged that.
Could be a panel up there? Wow, that just couldn't have happened.
Turn it off, Rob. We got it.
You want to skip to the roof?
No, no.
Again, your utility rate is very low. Energy savings would total in that. I apologize, it's a little hard for you to see, but it's about 310, 311 thousand dollars a year. Now, that number's going to vary a little and we are conservative to begin with. So every, everybody we've ever talked to, including Libertyville, Lake Park, other districts, they've exceeded their expectations quite a bit in energy savings. Demand savings wouldn't start until year two and those would be around 60,000. Now, almost 50% of your utility bill is demand savings. So reducing that at all is real money that you guys are going to be actually able to take advantage of. We have SREC income starting in year two, which I will get into as well. The procurement that was, that just took place in April was a very small procurement. They decided to lump it in, it was called distributed generation, and solar was lumped in with geothermal, wind, battery storage, every type of renewable energy there possibly is. And they gave out a very small amount of SRECs. Those contracts were in the five year terms, which we had talked about before. Starting at the beginning of 2018, those contracts go to 15 year contracts locked in and the value is going to go way back up. Now, this last procurement, the value was at $68 on SREC. Originally I had showed you projections at $100 on SREC. I've put the projections down to $60 on SREC, which it's never been that low before, but again, I'm trying to show you some conservative numbers. We anticipate that going back up to the $100 a rec. There's an opportunity potentially that it'll be a school only procurement, which will actually potentially increase that. But what the IPA and the utilities are looking for are projects that are in place to offset the SRECs. So you could do your installation, start generating power once your system is energized and they, more than flip the switch, but basically flip the switch. And the meter will keep track of everything you've produced to that point. Once your SRECs come in, all it's going to do is start backfeeding you with checks. So you're going to get checks a lot faster because it's going to be able to keep track of exactly where you're at. Again, every time you produce 500,000 KW, you can expect a check. So a system of this size, you're going to look at almost 11 checks a year, over 11 checks a year, which is going to be real money, potentially, you know, 40, 50,000 dollars every time. If you do a taxes and lease option, which is what we're showing up here, you actually wouldn't have to make a payment for two years through construction. So you could, you could hold the money aside that you were thinking of using for that, for those payments, put it aside, and when the first note comes due, which is technically year three, you can make a large payment and it would knock down years off of that service. Or you just follow this model that I've shown and for the next 15, 20 years, you would be paying off that, that loan. The first two years, which is cut off a little bit here, there we go. You're, you're positive $300,000 year one. You're positive a million, over a million dollars in year two. Again, conservative numbers because we've seen that those will increase dramatically. You will be negative for a few years while you're paying off the, the lease. And that would be this section right here. But you're still going to be positive overall because of how much you've accumulated those first two years. Once you finally pay off that, that system, all you're going to be doing is making close to a million dollars every year in revenue. That number should continue to go up as utility costs go up and obviously the size of the, the system and the wattages that we put in would still factor into exactly what those numbers are. But based on this model, I'm projecting you guys at over $10 million of pure cash savings after covering expenses and positive year one, positive year two, and staying cumulatively positive until the entire system was paid off. That was based on, again, a rough number. We haven't walked contractors through. We don't have the exact final design based on structural analysis. So there could be opportunity to reduce panels, move panels, all that. But that was a not to exceed 12.7 million dollars. That number...
Don't show them that number.
Well, I put it on the other pages, but I'm not afraid of it because, again, you're making money from the beginning. It is a large number, I understand that. And there are a lot of different options that go into it. But I thought the best thing to do is show you what you, what the district is capable of doing between your roofs and your ground mount here. Again, that would produce a 4.33 megawatt system.
This is based on 4.33 and what SREC?
This is based on $60 a rec. So six cents basically is how it's divided, but that's a very, again, the last procurement was 6, 68, $68. And the procurements all before, we had, were in the 140s. So we had been securing them at $100 a rec. But they only had, you actually would have secured more SRECs or over 50% of the SRECs that are even available if we were able to get them this last time. But because we weren't already in the ground and because we were looking at a little bit higher number, we did not get them. We know going forward, we will get the SRECs. Now, I've put for year two because that gives us at least three more procurements to make sure that we get them. But part of that is we could at any point hire a, literally they're an SREC broker. That's all they do. And they are the ones that manipulate the, the market and tell you exactly where you need to be bidding.
You mean managed, right?
Managed, sorry. Yes, yes. The procurement last fall for this distinguished, distributed generation, they were all at $140 a rec. So at our $100 a rec, we should have been well under what the average was. But somebody talked and, and obviously somebody knew to bid $68 a rec and we did not. So if we, if we have to hire, we were hoping to do this where we didn't have to hire anybody for the district, but if we had to hire somebody for the district and pay them a, a fee for securing SRECs, we will. The idea is that the SREC market is there. It is going to be used through the utilities in the future. It's going to be 15 year contracts instead of five. And it's also a market that if the district decided that they didn't like the value that they could get in Illinois, they could go to another state, they could call it Amazon, IKEA, Nike. Some of the major manufacturers are always looking to include more renewable energy into their portfolio. And that column is still very, still a very variable column because of the value. Right now, again, I'm at very conservative number at $60 a rec. We think we can get higher than that. But even at $60 a rec, you're still making money.
So it's 12 million dollars to buy a paper cell here, I think. That doesn't include the roof?
That does not include the roof. So, again, this is web access anytime. We've talked about that, which you could put a kiosk here, something included. I actually can pull up the other districts' systems anytime today. Unfortunately, it wasn't a good day to show you, but it has historical data and it shows live runtime and I can do it from my phone through the inverter. K-12, STEM labs, and the solar kits are another option. We can go, skip one more. Here's the roof project. So obviously in the process, we, we, we evaluated the roofs and found out that they were 1996 roofs and majority of them...
This is Oak Plain, right?
No.
Almond.
Almond Campus.
Except for the addition?
Everything but the addition, correct. It's around 250,000 square feet that needs to be redone. We went out to multiple contractors. We did, we hired a design consultant to look at the roofs, evaluate the roofs, tell us exactly what we needed to do. We put out a RFP through our company for the roof work and included that as our, in our proposal to the district. What we got back was, we walked four contractors through. One decided not to bid, the other three did, and they, the numbers actually came back better to do the roof in two phases. So if you, it's hard to see here, but we basically have the non-long span sections of the roof where we would want to do the solar first is what we would have included as our, our phase one for the roof work. Now, that is, and I, and I don't have it in here, but I can show you an area map of exactly what, what areas of the roof we broke down. Section J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, and T. The roofing contractors that we talked to said they would be able to get that done this summer, no problem, based on working around schedules, working around summer school, managing with the building, and, and being able to get material and get started right away. The second part was if the weather is quiet, which it hasn't been, but I can't, we're hoping that it doesn't rain like this all year. If they can do more, they will. And they, again, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I have been broken out so that they can continue to move forward. The prices that we got were actually better for doing it over potentially two summers with the notion that if they could continue to move forward, they would. But their concern was putting in too much time in premium time to get it done all in one summer, and we agreed. I did put in an alternate in here and I'll show you that in a second. The base price for the roof work for sections J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, and T is 3.851 million dollars. That is getting you up to code based on the new energy code with the correct insulation. We would be reusing some installation in areas we can. For the most part, it's all going to be ripped off and redone and it would be a fully, a full new roof before the end of summer. Our contractors are standing by, ready to, to move if the district decides to move forward and they can get started immediately, especially since kids are out of, kids have graduated, so.
We've got some juniors left. Just a thousand, give or take.
Okay. Well, again, that is part of, part of the timeline that we put together. The last one would be the alternate, which if the district didn't want to push for the entire roof replacement in one summer, it, it does add, it does add quite a bit to the cost. It's over 4.1 million. We had budgeted 4.1 million when we had first talked about what your total roof would, was cost. We were hap, very happy with the numbers that we got from the three different contractors for the roof work. Comes out to about $15 a, a square foot, which for flat adhered roofs, that's a very, very aggressive price. That is a combined number for, for all of Almond to be done potentially over two summers or as much as they can get done, excuse me, in, in this summer, depending on the weather. They will at least get J through T done this summer. They will at least get J through T done this summer without, before school and before kids are back. But if the weather allows for it, they'll do more.
On your note, number one, pricing is on work being selected before fall twenty seventeen, school year begins. Can you just clarify what you mean by selected?
Yeah, uh, again, we're not, uh, assuming anything. The board does have to make a decision to move forward, and this price would need to, we would need to be hired before the, uh, the school year starts. Obviously, the later we wait, the less of a chance we have of finishing the roof. So this just is in there to say, this price will not be good for next year if, uh, if the board decides not to move forward at this point. Does that make sense? Correct, so the roof, our final hard numbers, we have the contracted price. I didn't include it in here, but we do have all the, uh, we do have all our numbers shown. We do everything what we call open book pricing. I showed you all three subcontractor costs. You see our project management costs, our engineering, any contingency. We had to hire the roof consultant, that number's in here, um, our overhead profit. So that is all included, and it, and it should be in your, uh, um, your packet, or I can get that to you. Um, this solar is a not to exceed number. Um, and again, there's a very good chance that we're gonna have to change some panels out, locations, move some, and in size. So that, that would go down, um, and potentially could go down dramatically depending on the district's decision. Uh, I have not, but I know we will not, we do not wanna put the solar on until you do the roofs because.
I understand. I'm talking about what would be, there was, there was ground here at Almond, there was ground and roof at O'Plane.
Yep.
What would our payback with the SRECs, that, the spreadsheet that I was looking at here? What would that look like if we did not tackle installing panels on the Almond roof?
So, um, the Almond roof is one point three megawatt potential system. So that would reduce your, that would reduce you down to about three megawatts of total if you, uh, if you took that out. What's called real rough numbers at three dollars is a me- a watt. So that's around nine million. Um, energy savings would stay the same, or energy savings would obviously be reduced because your production would go down, um, one point seven. So you'd be at about four million KWH produced, um.
No, I can't put you on this.
Yeah, I think I have it, I, I.
I, I think it's worth thinking about that because.
Absolutely.
We don't have an extra four million laying around to do a roof.
I, I, completely understand. Um, I do have that run, I just don't have it with me. It's, it's in my car. I might have actually said it to you once before, Carol, I don't know.
So for a solar farm with our property in Stern School.
Yes.
What size farm for ground mounts would we have to have to equal seventy-five percent? Or maybe it matters with the launch, how much is more? But let's just say, care for one hundred percent of our electric. What size farm would you put on Stern School property?
This system is gonna cover about seventy-five percent. That sixty acres is gonna be well above a hundred percent to the point where we actually did some, um, very quick discussions about it. You could actually sell, it would go, you would bypass ComEd, sell directly to the PGM market, and you would be producing a fifty or sixty megawatt system that you would be able to sell to other school districts. SREC income and the premium time, which is still less than what they're used to paying, but it'd be a premium time to the district. So you would actually be able to sell off pieces of that because you wouldn't, you would only need a very small chunk of that to get you to a hundred percent, um, if you did this. Now, if you didn't, again, four megawatts, five meg, you know, five megawatts gets you very close to a hundred percent. We don't wanna go over a hundred percent unless you're getting in the business of selling and becoming a, a power producer, which is a great thing.
Business classes here, finance classes.
Yeah.
You know, there's love to be said about, you know, teaching kids about the real world. Carol, would you like money?
Absolutely. Yeah, um, I don't have the exact rate right now, but you would be selling it for a premium, um, and the premium would be less than the other districts would be paying, and you'd be able to sell off your SREC income. And it would be a utility-grade system, so you wouldn't be under any of the normal restrictions that you are with, with the current, uh, solar. Two megawatts and, and below and different things like that.
Not, not. Get too far over the rainbow there. How, how big a piece of land would you say we would need to put up a solar farm just to cover our costs?
Well, well, we did, we had two acres at, uh, at Gray's Lake, and that was, that's producing about, um, one point seven five megawatts, so if we. Five or six, five or six acres.
Let's say six acres.
Yeah. Rough, rough, rough number.
So can we put it out there and just tell it for ourselves?
Absolutely, then you wouldn't be utility grade, and it would be, it would be back under ComEd, and everything would look like this.
Oh, we can always expand.
Absolutely, correct, correct.
I thought, one point, I thought we had to put it here on the campus.
You don't have to, um, it works the best because you're, you're gonna have the least amount of line loss. The original thought was that if you had it here, and then you had the solar farm, that you wouldn't really need the solar farm because you had this one offsetting all, majority of your utility bills, and the other one would be used as a, uh, a vehicle for the district to really, uh, earn some large income.
Jim and I have gone around, around about this.
Talking.
I'm not a big proponent of putting things on our roofs, like the case. I think we, we should have some conversation and explore all of our options, especially since you just have these opportunities for future growth and future production of electricity that could produce larger dollar amounts for us. I don't know if we've got, we don't have the money right now to fix the roof. Um, you're not gonna put the roof goes, that solar panel, uh, system on our roof because.
Bet you're not.
Well, that would not, that would be throwing, uh, bad money at, you know, at a good idea, so.
We should say it more accurate. We don't have the money to put, to fix the roof to install a one point three. We could install a three. So we have the roof that was planted and then the ground locations that both locations.
Correct.
I'd like to see what the map looks like there. Because the roof.
Is gonna need to get replaced, maybe not now, but.
So we still have this expandable up to four point three.
I'm not as concerned about putting stuff on roofs every time.
It, it's a consideration though, you know.
Why would you wanna mess with that really?
Worry about, you don't have to hire engineers to worry about what beams can handle what strength. We have a piece of property where we could put, produce more than enough energy and have a possibility to expand. Land mounts here, we're already kind of tight with land. If we ever wanna do, you know, we look, we moved the track from, you know, to O'Plane campus over here. Uh, we've got to shove it out to that. We're running on a property, we've got a piece of property off top of Seadoll. We've got a marijuana, we've got a couple of small pieces.
We can't use that land though, Mike, 'cause it's drainage. I mean, it's, it's, I'm not saying that, that we can waste land, but that land that he's talking about putting it on here is basically not usable for a field unless we had some alternate drainage thing, which I don't know what that would be, but it's not usable land. I mean, I'm in favor of putting it out on the fifty acres, don't get me wrong. But I, this land is usable for the solar because it's a, it's a, it's a swamp, I mean, for all practical purposes.
Place to put, put things like solar farms, you know, but we've got that property.
That can make money, right?
Do it, and we put it in a place where we're already putting the power. And we can't, we can't stand that we put it on ground here.
That's true.
So there's nowhere to go. So now we just put a system in that we can't expand to. Now, if you do wanna expand, now we gotta incur more costs, put it back in another place to expand to add more money. So why don't we just put it where, you know, we can already go ahead and expand? It seems to make a lot of sense.
Are there any other hurdles to putting it out there?
Uh, there are a few.
Steve?
I would, yeah, I mean, I don't think so many at, at accounting. I'm in favor. Who was actually looking at the ground, opposed ground? Is that a swampy?
That's where the drainage is, yeah, that's where all the water runs, yeah.
It kinda looked from the aerial picture.
Yeah, I mean, it's not wet all the time, but that's where our storm drainage goes. And that was developed so, so we could put the track over there, and, and Seadoll could build the building that they built over there and the softball and baseball field and all that stuff, and the parking lot expansions and.
I'm interested in understanding what the real options are and what the economics.
Back in years, sheet here, and I actually, and I apologize, it was in the packet. It, it's, it pays back after twenty-two years, you know, and it's cash flow negative from years.
Well, it's for those years.
Those, but I know there's a, an offset in our bill.
Right, cumulative, you're still positive.
Right, right.
Because you made a million in the first two years, technically, if you get the SRECs.
And the, and the SREC cost doesn't go lower than sixty. I mean, there's no guarantee there. It's becoming a commodity. So I, I just, there's risks to all of that. I'd like to see sensitivity analysis from a hundred down to forty for all the different options to understand the payback in years and net cash flow.
Per year, each year, in the first twenty years, kinda thing?
Closer to that, I'd like to see the same. Yeah, you were raised.
Is everybody, is everybody know Steve Cross, like, gotta board member? As you know, it's unincorporated, it's in the district I represent. Um, I know there's been some discussions, it's not coming when you're already preliminary discussion. Um, in talking to Eric White, after planning, there are, the, the, the negative is that they've never done this before. And that's also a possibility, if you guys could be a temp. I could say that probably the master plan is very much exercise in real life, and, you know. I, I have no reason to doubt if this gets too slanting, any problem with any of my peers who've done it themselves. And I have to be perfectly prepared to push it, in my opinion, with the question because it's in my district. But again, this is, this is new territory, we don't have rules for this. So again, that's a negative because we're not sure exactly what to do. The positive is, we can make the rules to fit you guys and put the test rule to it. I don't know what's definitely, I, I, from what I've heard of it, I, I think it's long, long. I don't think you're gonna have a problem with it, I'll just support one, and that'd be. No, not that applies to all of it, you know, that's incorporated during, unincorporated, that's supporting people.
So it sounds like from a next step standpoint, you could really solidify what you think are options.
One option is, out here, and we. One option, I'm rattling these off.
Just one up, just up one.
One option is, we don't do the roof here, and we're down to three point zero. One roof is we start expanding out on the Stern School property.
And you have to dissect the economics behind all of those options to understand the initial cash offlay.
Schedule over years of savings and net impact or net cash flow impact or.
And then with the long, the Stern School option, that, I think with phase one, there's a phase two or three.
Those look like.
You could theoretically do the, the three million, whatever, or three. And then go with working with the county on the bigger projects.
I personally think that. I don't think that's. Realistically speaking, if we said. Yeah, we wanna do that, I mean, it could be eight months, a year before we get it off.
We'd have to make the rules. We'd have to look at the procedures and that sort of thing, after this, so we could do this all. My guess would be a longer.
That'd be a longer term thing, where the ground mount here and this kinda stuff, you could do more immediately once we saw the number. Both, I mean, there's no reason you couldn't do both. I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but I think we could do both, right? I mean. Again, um, the lease is very flexible, so yes, you are gonna be spending the money, but you're, it's not gonna leave your, it's not, it's counted as, it's debt in all of our minds, but it can't be counted as debt against, the, the district can't levy against it, different things like that. So it's, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit harder to say because, yes, you can continue to increase that size, do what you, do a three megawatt system without the roof work, lose three point eight million or, or save three point eight million for the next few years, hopefully generate, uh, generate enough income to do the roof because in the next two, three, four years, you're gonna have to do the roof anyways, um, at some point. And then, along with that, look at what the utility grade, because again, there's complete, it's, it's, it's not apples to apples when you look at utility grade and selling off parcels of, of your system. You are basically acting as, uh, as a ComEd. So you're working directly with the supplier that's supplying ComEd, who's making all that extra money, um, supplying everyone here. So it's a very cool thing, um, and, and something that you are, you are very lucky to have the land. Now, whatever you decide to do with it, but it, putting. There's a lot of separate issues involved, obviously. Absolutely, and I, 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 I recognize that. But, um, I can get you what that three megawatts look like, or, is it, the three megawatt system looks like, which would be the roof at O'Plane, the ground at O'Plane, and the roof, or, and the ground here at Almond. Um, you, the largest portion of that is the ground at Almond. That also will have your best payback and your best, uh, production because it is a ground mount, and we're looking at almost two megawatts there. So I will give you a few different options between what those three look like. Yeah, please, please do it. Light it up, so you got, you show Almond by itself? And you show both of the O'Plane pieces, but each by itself? That way, if, if you wanna, we can piece it together. All three separate. Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah, all three, yeah.
Can you do one just for Stern School property?
So absolutely, I didn't know exactly where it was. My, uh, my design engineer is, is ready to start looking at it, and, um, that is a little bit above my pay grade, so I'm gonna bring in our national expert, uh, when it comes to that. But he actually spent, uh, four days last week in Kentucky with, uh, one of the, the large renewable, um, basically directors. And this is, it was her suggestion as well to him that this, if you have districts that have land, that this is the way to go, because you could start selling off, um, large parcels of that, um, production that you're making, so.
That's fantastic. These kind of road, I think right now, just for our conversations, looking at all of our options, what is best for us right now, and also gives us stability for future growth.
Couldn't agree more.
And time for the, things like that, we have.
Absolutely.
Questions from?
No.
Thanks so much, Kurt, for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Hey, next item, approval of resolution for preparation of the tentative amended budget twenty seventeen.
A summary of the purpose of amending the budget, but I just wanna spend a couple minutes talking about this. Uh, we're essentially, budget amendment process is, is the same as the original budget approval process. There will be a notice placed in the newspaper, you're signing the resolution to put that notice in the newspaper. There would be a public hearing in thirty days, which would be our last board meeting in June. The amended budget then becomes the final budget of the district. In the audit report, you will see both the original budget and amended budget, uh, for comparative purposes. In the audit report, you will see both the original budget and amended budget, uh, for comparative purposes. The reason we don't typically amend a budget, but I thought it was particularly important this year because, uh, of the, what I feel is the reality of a loss of state revenue. And I thought it was important for districts to start illustrating that and for, for wanting to get a good picture of what this year may look like. So I did budget revenue down, state. Revenue down by one point eight million dollars. And, um, with a budget, uh, on the expenditure side, a budget is your maximum spending authority. I do think we're, I'm, I'm optimistic that our expenditures are gonna come in, on, on budget, but I'm asking the board to give an additional expenditure authority of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I explained kinda where that, what those categories are. Um, so the result of the amendment is the, an operating deficit of about two point three million dollars going to an operating des- deficit of four point three million dollars. Unfortunately, I believe that's our reality and, you know, this is, uh, I think a reflection of what that is and obviously, you know, we're gonna have some work to do in the future, but, um, again, you know, I think, I think schools should be amending the budget when, when the state is doing what the state is doing to us, so.
I didn't send you. So, so this year, the projected deficit is four point six.
With the amend, with the.
This year, not this year, our current year.
Original budget, the operating deficit, two point three.
Right.
Yeah.
And the projected deficit, end of our fiscal year this year is?
Which means?
Four point three.
Four point three.
Which means we're gonna.
Take a little out of cash reserves, which, which you kind of explained in that other summary. End of April, we were a little above nine. Right now, we're at eight point something, eight point nine.
Our low point was actually, uh, eighteen seventeen. Had cash on hand of eight point three million dollars, uh, and we've got a fifty-seven million dollar expenditure budget and we run about six million dollars in payroll, uh, Ju-, the first week of June. We actually did get any tax collections, but. Not, not a problem for this year. Next year, if we're on this path, we're, you know, we're gonna be really watching cash and maybe coming to the board with, you know, borrowing on.
So I'm, I'm kinda leading. So then, so that was this year. Next year, we're projected as of today to be four point three. This time last year, for last year, we were projected to be two point three. We ended up four point three.
Right.
So there's probably some risk to the four point three number we've got projected here in the amended budget. Later on, next year. Um, but we have our budget discussions in September that we talked about. The staffing plan is set, which of the fifty-seven, of the fifty-seven roughly represents with benefits about forty of it, which means we've got seventeen-ish, sixteen, eight for this current year budget if we wanna tighten some things up. I don't, I'd, I'd like to understand of that seventeen, how much is even discretionary? I mean, there's tuition in there, there's lights, there's roof, there's, there's things that we're not gonna be able to lower. So there's a lot of risk in, I think one of the objectives of our sessions in September should be, 'cause I think we've done good things, we've been fixing the facilities, but we need to have kind of a multi-year line of.
Sight of how bad is this gonna get and when does it get better? And maybe part of this.
Solar project has to play into that. There has to be two more solar projects.
That we need to add to this solar type project, some project that's actually positive cash flow. But I think that's a big objective of that September session is that just one year, but.
Just looking at.
I mean, I think we have kind of a multi-year line of sight to when does this start to become positive.
Absolutely.
We don't have a budget in Illinois still.
Oh. Crafting, I read.
About September is a lot of pieces are, become more concrete for us, especially on revenue side. Got our claims filed. So September's a really good time to look at the revenue side. In our budget process right now, we have gone to a needs-based budget method with our staff. Uh, we are looking for a fifteen percent reduction in those discretionary categories. So, uh, we have already approved somewhere fifty thousand dollars in projects, um, which.
Which we might reconsider.
Already, first, but going forward, you certainly could reconsider that. Uh, but, you know, because of the time of year, all the decisions for seventeen, eighteen related to early capacity, we're focusing on tightening up seventeen, eighteen. And what is going to happen in September, and I'm really looking at eighteen, nineteen going forward. If you remember back in, I believe it was January, you did a five-year forecast for me. Update that. Forecast, um, you know, there's some modeling for you on, on different scenarios. So that would be, I think, a good focus for September also.
We have to, we have to cut spending. There's no question about that, so. So if we could do it next year, we would, but I think it's, we're already, if the state had stayed with us, we'd probably be weathering the storm quite nicely, but with the state taking two million out this year and two million out next year, then that puts a big, if they just don't pay us what they said they were gonna pay us, which is what appears they're gonna do, then that leads you down a path that is, is gonna require some action in that eighteen, nineteen school year. Dramatic action, I would say.
And we're, I mean, we are still hopeful for state funding, but we have to plan for the, for more worst case scenario.
Get three or four payments? Four?
We get four and we've gotten one.
Let's, three more would be two point seven million, so, yeah. If we had that, we'd be at least, you know, less rocky.
Any, uh, any other comments or questions?
I have a, I just have one, um, thing. Carol, when you do this report for the treasurer's report, there's a part where it says total of all funds, it says sixty-five million.
Really?
Yeah. Says it's.
My bad type.
On, um, it's on page nine of twenty-one, if you're just thumbing through it.
Okay.
Next, on page, on ten.
You give me the name of the.
Uh, direct expenditures report by object, April thirty, two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
Page ten of twen-
Five million, million is all funds?
Right.
So that's our expenditure for all funds, that includes debt service. So when I talk about fifty-seven million dollars in operating expenses, I tell them to include our debt service.
All the payments on the funds, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is all funds.
Okay.
Yeah. So you must be like eight million dollars in bond and interest payments.
Which is levied, it's paid, yes.
It is levied. So usually when I, when I speak, I always speak excluding the bond and interest fund and a capital projects fund, 'cause those are restricted funds on our day-to-day operating money.
How much is in the capital fund?
Pardon me?
The capital fund is debt due. Is there cash in that?
There's a teeny bit of cash in that. So. Right now in the capital projects fund, we have, um.
Okay.
Sixty-two thousand dollars.
That's nothing.
For roof yet, but.
Come on, come on.
Maybe we can fix. Any other, any other questions, anybody?
Nope.
Otherwise I'll need a, whoops.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the resolution for preparation of the tentative amended budget for two thousand seventeen.
Call.
Yes.
Landa?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
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 Item.
Second.
Yes. Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
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 Item, approval of new textbooks and curriculum writing for twenty-
Uh, Willie.
Yeah, there is curriculum, that's solar panels curriculum. So anyway, um, in your board docs, you have, um, the textbook budget for next year. What I'm proposing.
Got the textbooks.
Okay, how about curriculum writing?
What did we buy those Chromebooks for? I mean.
When are we gonna go electronic with all our textbooks?
Uh.
Two thousand and twenty-five.
PW, post Willie. How's that? You didn't like that. Okay, I don't know.
Sorry for interrupt.
That's okay. Um, I, I don't know. I'm some, I, it just kinda depends. Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, moving.
Assosced, sorry.
So, no.
Sorry, Conway interrupted you again.
Just so, you know, everybody knows, we have a textbook and curriculum writing cycle and it goes every six years. So all of our courses are within every six years. So when we come up for adoption, there's probably, oh, I would say thirty to thirty-five, forty courses that could, basically put in for new textbooks, but what was approved or what was sent to us this year was only twelve. So, I mean, the teachers really do a very nice job of like saying, do we really need a new textbook? Or this is what we want, this is what we're gonna get, and they're being very frugal. So sometimes they'll go classroom sets, they'll get other resources online and just have a, a book in the classroom for the kids. So they're trying to do their best to, you know, be frugal with their textbooks. So anyway, this year, there was twelve courses that, um, put in for new textbooks. Um, and the reason we're able to do twelve, last year, there's only like four or five. These are small amount of textbooks. The courses aren't, they don't have that many students that they're requesting, so that's why we're able to do so many of them. So anyway, um, it comes to about a hundred and eight thousand. And keep in mind, when we do electronic textbooks or online textbooks, we only pay for one-sixth of the cost each year. So that if you looked at that, you can kinda see that we pay one-sixth of it. Um, and usually, there's always textbooks that we need extras of. If there's, you know, all of a sudden the enrollment increases and one will need to get additional textbooks. Or sometimes the kids, when they bring back the textbooks, they're a little trash, so we'd have to get some new ones for replacement. So usually that's about seven thousand. What we're gonna try to do is obviously sell back as many books as we can. Spanish Four has agreed to do, um, we're getting them online textbooks, they just want a few in the classroom, so we're able to sell those books back, and so we'll probably get some money from that. Last year, we got about five thousand dollars worth of money from, you know, when they come back and people wanna buy our textbooks, so. Anyway, and then curriculum writing usually goes along with that. Um, there was a little bit of an increase from last year, and I know we were trying to reduce our budgets by ten to fifteen percent. The overall budget that I put together is reduced by twenty percent, so we do have just a little uptick in the curriculum writing, but I think we compensated it with the rest of my budget to actually make sure we're down about twenty percent, so. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Oop. I move to approve the new textbooks and curriculum writing for twenty seventeen dash eighteen school year.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Landa?
Yes.
Item.
Every year, we go out to bid for paperback books based on requests. So, uh, we received, uh, we had six bidders and we broke down by the lowest bid per vendor, so we've given you a summary there, so we're asking the board to, uh, award the paperback, uh, bid to the vendors as presented.
I move to approve the paperback book bid and award the bid to the recommended vendors as presented for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
By Anderson, second by Schultz. Hamlin? Walsh?
Yes.
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 I move to approve the discipline recommendation for student two thousand seventeen dash oh eight.
Landa?
Uh, I'll abstain as I am the principal of regional section of Auburn.
Yes.
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 Yes. Just, uh, next item, approval of the hiring recommendations per exhibit A.
Approve exhibit A, hiring recommendations, numbers two one nine through two three one as posted.
Second.
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
I move to approve the payment of the bills for five twenty-three two thousand seventeen in the amount of three million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Approval of the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of May ninth, two thousand seventeen.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of May ninth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Fine.
You're all good, Gene.
Come on, Mike.
Just keep it rolling.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes, and one.
Last item, uh, approval of the special meeting minutes and executive session minutes of May twelfth, two thousand seventeen.
I move to approve special meeting minutes. Twelfth, twenty seventeen.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Yes.
Landa?
Yes.
Okay, I move, we adjourn the meeting. Can I, one real quick thing? I'd like to publicly congratulate the Warren Township High School girls for advancing onto the next round, they won three to one this evening. Congratulations.
How about soccer?
How did volleyball go?
I don't know, sorry. Thinking about soccer. Michelle, do you? What have you been doing? Uh, move, we adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Roll call?
Motion by Drake, second by Anderson, Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
I am just starting to have fun over here.